North Smithfield Town Council meeting April 7, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you start us with a prayer and pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Buragad. Mr. Christopheraro.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Punchak.
Here.
Ms. Howes.
Here.
Open forum pursuant to 42-46-6D. Maximum three minutes per person. Did anyone want to sign up to speak in open forum? Mr. Grubb, if you'd like to get up. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I saw there was nothing about the quarry on this agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Grubb. Can you just add your name and address, please?
Richard Grubb, Bowlett Street, North Smithfield.
Thank you.
I saw there was nothing about the quarry on the agenda this time. There are a few loose ends that I would hope get progress reports. But the real, those loose ends are covered in that letter. But the real reason I'm standing here is because I keep hearing murmurs or rumors that some of you are considering accepting the overlay proposal out of fear of what the quarry might do if you refuse it. That fear ranges from the possibility of continued litigation to the possibility they will continue to mine as they please right up to their current property lines. It may appear that accepting their offer of stipulations attached to their new zoning overlay would be the easiest method to gain some control over their operations. Please look at history. In 1990, North Smithfield gave them a road use permit with stipulations. And then in 1991, the town council decided that they needed to add one stipulation, that of a flagger on the road. And the quarry turned right around and sued the town. Said it was too much of a hardship, and it wasn't part of the original stipulations. I believe there's never been a better time to gain control of the quarry operations than now. The judge clearly stated that North Smithfield has the right to enforce its zoning ordinances and place the burden on the quarry to work out a use variance with the town. You could certainly add any stipulations you wanted to any use variance without creating an overlay district. It is highly unlikely the town council or any other private citizen, for that matter, could possibly imagine what stipulations are necessary to keep the quarry in check. Perhaps you have already decided, and these words are in vain, then at least please offer the list of stipulations before you approve the quarry proposal. Give our citizens an opportunity to review and offer their own comments. Lastly, I don't like bringing this up, but please remember, one town council member who is recused from this case was elected on a single issue of poor town council oversight on past issues, particularly as it was related to the quarry. Ten more seconds, 20. She responded to criticism on her Facebook news page of NRI Now, I'm sorry, that one North Smithfield voter had said to her. She replied, "My work on the MSSC case is precedent for the due diligence enforcement of town law and ordinances I intend to pursue as a town councillor. The lack of oversight and accountability which has enabled that operation is pervasive and a serious liability. That will change with our new town administrator and new town councillors. North Smithfield deserves something better, and I hope you remember that's what you stood for after the election."
Can she respond, or?
Okay, Mike.
Wait one second.
Technically speaking, under the open records, open meetings law, a councilperson can always respond if their name is brought up by someone during open forum. And I think counsel, when you could do that. But I would ask you, obviously, to be cognizant of your constraints. Can you do that?
Then I'll choose not to respond. Thank you.
Mike Clifford, 489 Black Plain Road. I've made the suggestion from time, you know, several times to previous councils and this council, that you request to have an audit done of the tax records and the finance department, a performance audit. And it fell on deaf ears. I still don't believe those tax rolls are correct. And when I was looking up some information today in preparation for meeting tonight with something else that I'm not even going to have time to address now, I noticed that on the budget for this year, we're showing, we had an adopted budget of current year tax revenue of $34,692,542. But the actual amount for current year only that we collected was $35,303,739, $611,000 more than we should have paid. So, you know, when you're over by that much, I went to the audit report, and has the audits been presented to you people yet?
No, not yet.
No, I'd love to be at that meeting. But I went to the audit report, and I looked at that, and I tried to find reference to that. And they said, well, could be, was attributed to probably a higher, likely or something is the word they used, higher collection percentage. I don't think that's possible, because that's like collecting 100, you know, 100% of what you're calculated at. She makes an exception for the collection rate when she sets the levy. So I don't get how that plays in. And they also said use of a collection agency. Well, you use a collection agency for past due, pre-pry year taxes, not for current year taxes. So I don't know where they're getting that one from. And then the third one referenced something about the automobile, you know, which is not even charged now by the cities and towns, but that had some impact. So I'd really like to get an answer to it. But this really tells me, again, that there's something wrong with the records. You look back at the last four or five years. I think the highest time we ever came in over budget for the amount that we were collecting was $200,000. Now, this is $600,000. And I don't know if they're misallocating and attributing the payment to the wrong category, because they also budgeted $500,000 for prior year taxes, but they only collected 402. So the net change, the net difference is $500,000. But $600,000 off on current year taxes is not the norm, folks. I don't care what anybody tells you. And it would, and to me, it has to go back to the tax records. I don't believe they're correct. I think there's probably a lot of properties that are not paying what they should pay, or, and she doesn't have it recorded somewhere, or something. We're using two sets of records, because that should not be that big of a gap. Second thing, so that's my suggestion, and I continue to push for it, because this assessment, I mean, these numbers come from your tax assessor and your finance director. And that's why I'm saying I'd like both departments audited for performance to see if we're doing things the way we should be doing them. Secondly, the debt limitation.
Mike, you're out of time.
Oh, am I really over?
Yeah, yeah, you're done.
Okay, can I just say, debt limitation without referendum is in the charter. And it was commented on that the TIF bond wouldn't have to go before the voters. I'd like a legal opinion at some time from him on that, because I don't believe he's correct.
Presentation by Jesse Wright, Eagle Scout Project. Oh, did you want to speak? I'm sorry.
Scott Walling, Greenville Road. I just would like to know, the last administration, last year, March 18th, gave the road permit on Pound Hill Road for $35,000. It expired on the 18th. Where are we at 21 days later? Does anybody have an answer? Or could give me an answer why they're 21 days over on that permit? That's, I know you probably can't answer me, but I want to bring that to your attention. And the other thing is, where do we stand on our executive, not executives, our experts on the water, the air quality, the dust? Do we have anything going? Or are we not going to be, are we going to have them in place for the 5th of May meeting?
I personally don't have that information right now, but I can get that, we're working on that.
We're working on it right now.
Because I don't want to come to May 5th and say we don't have the experts and things go on. We need to have that for us. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else before we move on? Three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ryan Hammond. I'm at 19 Chester Street. I just wanted to thank Scott Gibbs and the Town Department of Public Works. We had a damaged railing near, that keeps like cars as a barrier between the road and like a little waterway that we have there. We put in a request through the town, and it got fixed in just a couple of weeks. I've never had that happen before in terms of like efficiency. So while there are issues that everyone here has brought up and need to be addressed, I just want to say that part seems to be working well, at least from my experience.
Thank you. Did you say Chester Street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Are we all set? All right. Presentation by Jesse Wright, Eagle Scout Project.
Do I have a time limit?
No, you're all set.
Okay.
He's afraid of the alarm.
You're good whenever you want to start.
All right, well, as you can see, my name is Jesse Wright. Next slide, please. My name is Jesse Wright, and I'm aspiring Eagle Scout from Troop 1139, Slatersville, Rhode Island. I did not know that I would have to be saying this, but I live in Gloucester, Rhode Island, 286 Hunting House Road. I'm the senior patrol leader of my troop, which means I'm the senior scout in charge of all the other scouts. I'm looking to carry out a project where I will be building signs for the villages of the town. And my project is a continuation of a past project from 2019 in which a scout from my troop built signs for the villages of the town. His name is Cameron Martin, by the way. I missed that. So the villages of North Smithfield are Primrose, Forestale, Slatersville, Branch Village, Union Village, Park Square, and Waterford. Two of those signs have already been built, and there's one in Primrose and one in Forestale. Oh, I'm not done yet, sorry. The one in Forestale is located along School Street and is next to the Forestale Schoolhouse. And the one in Primrose is located along Greenville Road and Providence Pike Road. It is on the corner intersection by the high school. And they look like that. They are green signs with white letters, and they mention the name of the village and the year that that village was incorporated. Next slide. The goal of my project is to build two signs for the villages. And I would like to build them in Slatersville and Branch Village. I picked Slatersville because that is my, the home of my troop, and Branch Village was a random choice. The signs will be as identical as possible to those in Forestale and Primrose. If you're wondering what the benefits of these signs could be, I will lay it out. So the village signs of North Smithfield will be a nice aesthetic to the town and will be a draw into areas with lands good, certain landmarks and businesses. And I like to just highlight the fact that North Smithfield is a town like no other where history is part of life and culture, and it's incorporated into its buildings and architecture and landscaping like no other. For example, the Mill Villages and the buildings that have businesses used in them is a really cool thing. And I think that the town, having signs for the villages of the town will cement the town's legacy as a deep cultural and historical town. Next slide, please. So where will these signs go? So the one in Slatersville, actually, I'll do Branch Village first. Branch Village will hopefully be located along St. Paul Street and Great Road, I believe. Yep, Great Road. So that corner right there where I have pinpointed is right, is the lot next to the fire station. And there is a plot right there next to a telephone pole, which would be a perfect location of the sign. We have vetted these locations of the sign in regards to ownership and their ability to be seen by traffic and people, pedestrians. I've also looked into the location next to the North Smithfield Public Library, which is along Greens, Main Street and Railroad Street. It is, it is part of the lot next to it. It's the same lot, sorry. And as far as the ownership, I vetted this with Richard Keen, who has been an enormous help to looking into this information. So I'd like to thank him. And I believe Mr. Pendergast wanted to speak on this a little bit, because we had some new information pop up.
Good evening, Ray Pendergast, Director of Public Works. In dealing with this project, there was some oversight as to the property owners of these two locations. So as of this morning, I clarified the ownership of the property in Branch River is the property of the fire department at that intersection, not the town. And then the other one is the property of the library. And librarian, the head librarian has assured us that they would approve this request on their property, but have to put it before their Board of Trustees in June. But for all intents and purposes, it is approved. Initially, when the project began, we normally come before the council for approval to put anything on town property. So we just wanted to clarify that moving forward. So there should be no problem at all. The fire chief's here to confirm that it is, in fact, his property, if we need that. But I take his word that it is. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Just to get a close up on the location of where these signs would be best. Branch Village, I had my dad and Mr. Keen stand where the sign would be facing. It would be facing in that small grass area, facing the Y, the fork of the road into the street, which would be the best spot for all cars to see it as they drive by. Slatersville sign, next to the library, this location has a little more flexibility as to where we can move it. But roughly, the location would be facing out, again, towards the fork of the road, and I had them face where it would face. So that is where it would be best. Again, this information has recently been disproven. So we have, I thought that the land was owned by the town, but we have recently been told that it is owned by the library and the fire department. But I have confirmed that Susan Dubois, the director of the library, will support this project and will bring it to her Board of Trustees when she can. And the fire department is also in support of this project. I have also support, as you can see, from Ray Pendergast of the Department of Public Works and Richard Keen from the North Smithfield Heritage Association. My timeline for this project, I've spent January through April planning this project. I hope to spend May and June fundraising for this, and I hope to have it complete and the signs built around September and November. Next, please. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Oh.
Maintenance.
Yes.
So is DPW going to take on maintenance in, you know, five years when they need to be repainted? Or just so that they, you know, I think it's a great idea, and, you know, when they're new, they look fantastic. But after they weather for a while, it becomes a little.
Good question. The two that are presently up, we've never had to maintain. They're pretty weather durable. I would definitely take care of that for him. I mean, the grass is cut. The library has their own landscaping company, so I'm sure that they'll work it out there. But if there are any issues that come to light, I'm sure the librarian will notify me and the fire chief.
And what happened, Rhode Island DOT put up their blue signs next to them once they're in and landscaped?
Hopefully not.
It's a joke.
Thank you. Like I said, I vetted these locations for the sign, and I also looked at the previous signs. And those were put up in 2019, and they are still in great condition. So maintenance is not a huge concern, but as far as maintenance, he said it for you. So, thank you. Yes?
They're not, they're not made of wood.
Oh, they're not.
Oh.
So in case you were wondering about the material of the sign, the posts are made of lumber surrounded by a plastic sleeve with a metal slot on the side that the material will slide into, which is the sign. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing them. Presentation by Peter Croshaw, Eagle Scout Project.
Good evening. My name is Peter Croshaw, 783 Pound Hill Road, North Smithfield, Rhode Island. And tonight, I'm presenting my Eagle Scout project, also known as Slater Park Improvements. Next slide, please. The location of my project is at James S. Slater The location of my project is at James S. Slater Memorial Park in North Smithfield, RI. This is at the intersection of Route 146A and Route 102. This is also, this is also in the area of the Cumberland Farms and Bridgewater Market. Next slide, please. I'd also like to go over some project site remarks. The park, James S. Slater Park, who the park is dedicated to, James S. Slater was a North Smithfield Town resident. He was Town, North Smithfield Town Clerk from 1903 to 1914, and then Rhode Island General Assembly from 1914 and until 1915. And the most significant thing that James S. Slater did, and the reason why the park is dedicated to him, is because he was the sole record holder that confirmed Rhode Island was one of the first of the 13 colonies to declare their independence, May 4th, 1776. Ironically, in Rhode Island's terms, they were the last of the 13 colonies to ratify the Declaration of Independence because of the heavy taxation that would have taken place, or ended up did taking place, on their shipping and trading, because we are a major shipping and trading colony at the time. Some other project sites, or project remarks I'd like to make is that the Amy Jarrett Memorial is present at the site, as well as the North Smithfield Vietnam Veteran Memorial, the World War II Veterans Memorial of North Smithfield, and there are multiple adoptive spots on the site. Next slide, please. Some project, my project description is design and installation of stone dust walkways. These are going to be 300 feet long by five foot wide. The benefit of having these walkways installed is that the community will have greater access to the park. Another objective of my project is the design and installation of two flagpole lights. The benefit of having the, sorry, the flagpole lights put in is that the beneficiary will no longer have to take down the flag at night, and also that the community will be better, better, eh, sorry, better, better, eh, damn, sorry. Tripping over myself. That the beneficiary, that the town and the community will have a better, will have a more beautiful sight because the flagpoles will be lit up. There we go. Thank you. The scope of work for this, for at least the electrical trench and the two flagpole lights, is the excavation of two feet of material for the electrical trench, the installation of liquid type PVC conduit and 12-volt direct burial wire. This has to be inspected by the electrical inspector, and this has to be infilled by 24 inches of stone, of sand bedding and loom. Next slide, please. All project blueprints. If you can't get it, that's fine, I can just... There we go. So, this is my project site blueprints. As you can see, up in the upper right-hand corner, that black line extending down from that tree-looking thing, that's the electrical trench, and that runs all the way down to the flagpole as marked. And the two parallel lines that are running with each other that have like a sort of filament in them, that is the stone dust walkways. Next slide. I'd just like to mention also that there is a onsite electrical service that we will be running the trench from. My expected project time length will be three workdays. My expected start time is April 26th, and then my expected end date is May 17th. My total cost before donations is about $12,000. I've done some major fundraising work. The first workday that I'd like to say is the excavation, is the excavation installation of the flagpole lights and the electrical trench. My second workday is the excavation of the stone dust walkways, and the third is the infill of stone dust inside the walkways. Next slide, please. This is just going over some required materials. So, stone dust, half-inch minus gravel for the base, liquid type conduit with direct burial, 12-volt direct burial wire, waterproof in-ground electrical fixtures, and then some required tools, obviously shovels, picks, scrub hose, and et cetera. Next slide. Thank you. Is there any questions?
So, this is town land, so do we have to vote on this one?
Mr. Pendergast can speak on that.
This is quite the project, if you haven't noticed.
Yeah, three days.
He's done a tremendous amount of work on this. I've assigned two of my key people, the senior foreman, Jeff Allard, and James Vatney, who have been corresponding with Peter for months, up until this point. So, with their guidance, this project I can see is going in the right direction. This is a piece of property that we maintain, we always have maintained, the electrical service is paid for through my budget. So, any work will be done with the guidance of Jeff Allard. So, I think it's a great project, I think he's gone overboard, and he just needs your permission to start this work. Thank you.
So, you're really going to get all this done in three days?
I hope so. It's a laborer love, just like my scouting career, but we won't talk about that.
Peter, what was some of the fundraising activities that you completed?
So, what I did was my main fundraiser is that I had a fundraiser at Good Stuff Smokehouse in Blackstone, Mass. I fundraised most of my money there. I had a cash jar there, I got a lot of money, thank God, and I ended up doing a lot of soliciting with local businesses, you know, Genties Construction, Agence Improvement, companies that will actually donate a lot of equipment and materials to complete this project.
Excellent.
Any more questions?
That's great.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project presented by Peter Croshaw for improvements at Slater Park.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Christopher, Mrs. O'Hara, Mr. Punchak, Ms. Alve.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
If you could just let the town clerk give your addresses for the two of you, so we could send some donations your way.
Awesome. That is 783 Pound Hill Road.
If you could just give it to her on the way out.
He wants everyone to know.
Everyone.
He knows it's being recorded.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to give your address, too. All right, next item, discussion by council voter, other action on payment of bills. Anyone have any questions on the payment of bills in your pack?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So, there are five line items that seem to be associated with the Hoops Program. So, there are five line items that appear to be associated with the Hoops Program?
What numbers were they? I had seen them, I don't remember what numbers.
So, it's on, oh, 91, 92, 93, 94, and 95.
I got them, yep.
So, I guess I'm just curious, so if that's a program that is, you know, receiving registration fees, where do those registration fees go?
That goes into a separate fund, the 1-3-1 Fund, and that's, it's its own self-revolving, it supports, the revenue supports the expenses.
So, why did the town take over Hoops because there weren't enough people, like it used to be its own thing, like soccer isn't, baseball isn't, now the town is running it?
I'm not sure of the logistics in terms of personnel and its success on its own, but I know Kate is overseeing it under DPW. But she's been doing a lot of work with it, where we adopted some software to oversee it as well, so it loops into the accounting system.
So, for the last several years, Wide World of Sports has been running the league when the volunteers several years ago gave it up. Didn't really tell anybody, so that's when Wide World took it over. Didn't really do a great job with the winter basketball program and the summer basketball program. So, a group of volunteers approached Kate Pascarella and myself about putting it back together and having the town run it, just like we used to run it years ago. So, with our guidance, they now are collecting registration fees, sponsorship fees for a summer program at the outdoor courts. We've been reassured by the school department that we will be able to use the outdoor courts exclusively. So, the money I believe that came in and any expenses were for the monthly clinics that were conducted. So, that's what I can believe those expenses are for. Kate kind of really controls that part of it, but that's really the history of how it's coming back to us, but it's still volunteer-driven.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I have a few. I think I'm going to jump down to, we have a few available balance deficits.
On, about the expenditure status report?
Yes. Do we want to jump to expenditures, or do you guys have any other questions about the above? I wanted to ask specifically about the Water Phillips project and the $95,000.
I've looked at that, I have to look more into that tomorrow and talk with, talk with Bill Dakota. I had just looked at that before yesterday, and I didn't have time to review it, but I will be looking into that tomorrow and talking with Marie to make sure that's not an error, and then confirming with Bill Dakota as to what, why it looks like that. I think it's due to there not being, obviously there not being a budget for the project, and it should be running through capital, but I'm going to just verify.
Do we have an understanding of what that project is, the Phillips project?
Yeah, it's a capital project, but I just want to, I'm not sure exactly the full scale of what the project is, but I think it has more to do with it being allocated to the wrong account right now.
Okay, okay.
But I just want to verify.
And then the only other significant deficit was that highway snow and ice removal, I think there's a line item later, or are we talking about that with payment of bills and the movement of?
Yeah, so, we'll end up doing, if, once the council approves it as a later item, we'll end up doing a transfer there, and then we'll end up reallocating the expenditure to the reserves.
For the streetlights project. Can I ask about the streetlights project really quick?
That, oh, I don't know, that's a...
Well, if we're, if it's a deficit, right, of almost, of $32,000, and the request is that we essentially move the streetlight project's budget to the snow and ice removal, do we no longer need streetlights?
It's an older project, I'm not sure of the history behind it, but it's under assigned fund balance. We usually, if we need to pull upon it, we usually do.
Okay, so it's not a priority project?
No, no, no.
Okay, okay.
Not at all.
That was my question, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the payment of bills?
I will make a motion to approve the payment of bills for April 7th, 2025, in the amount of $283,310.
That's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Christopher, Mrs. O'Hara, Mr. Punchak, Ms. Alve.
Yes. Old business discussion by council voter, other action on status slash progress report on specific items in municipal building review task force. We're going to talk about that a little bit further down, so we'll just move on that one. Discussion by council voter, other action on replacement of North Smithfield Fire and Rescue, Lifeline Rescue, Chief Shadia.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to seek your approval to award the manufacturing of a new rescue to replace our 2018 Rescue Number Two. This is in line with our vehicle replacement schedule, which, for rescues, we have it at seven years. But we're going to be kind of thrown off of that schedule because just the manufacturing timeline for this truck is two to two and a half years. So, that's why we kind of wanted to get in, one of the reasons why we wanted to try to get approval as quickly as possible, that and the potential impending tariffs and whatnot. So, you know, we're here to seek approval to award specialty vehicle, the estimated quote of $449,882 for the manufacturing of the truck. What I will say is that there has to be some leeway with that. There are some contingencies that are built into this pricing because of the timelines. You know, they can't narrow, pinpoint an exact price because we're going to be getting a 2025 chassis, but if we don't get it for another year or so, if that takes that long just for the chassis, that price could change, any manufacturing prices could change, so it's a little bit of a moving target. I will also say that as we get closer to the delivery date, I'll be back before you to, for approval for roughly, in today's pricing, around $42,000, and that's for radios, the stretcher for the back of the truck, and things of that nature. I considered buying some of it now, but the problem with, the problem with doing that now is that, I ain't making out over there. But the problem with doing that is that as soon as you get it, the warranties start. So, by the time the truck gets here, the warranties would be expired. So, even that, right now, the pricing for that kind of stuff is kind of, you know, a moving target. So, just like to get this thing going. This would be, all these funds will be purchased out of the third-party billing account, Fund 120. Also, that would apply to the other equipment as well, when that time comes. And this is off the master price agreement through the Houston Gallatin, master price agreement, which we bought two-engine trucks and the other rescue truck off of that as well.
Chief, it says the proposal's valid through February 27th, is it still a valid proposal?
It is, yes, I spoke it to the, yeah.
And what is the balance in the account?
So, every year, we reserve capital funds from that account towards it. I want to say, give me two seconds, I can pull that up. So, for the capital, as of right now, $600,000. And then obviously, we allocate money towards it in every fiscal year.
Right, okay.
I'd also like to chime in on that because, I mean, obviously, the cost of this equipment is, becomes staggering. And now, I know the chief is going to be looking in the not-too-distant future at the replacement of an engine. So, internally, between Finance Director, the chief, Paul Nordstrom, the Asset Management Committee, we're going to come back to the council with more of a projection, because I think what we're going to find based on the anticipated life cycles of these pieces of equipment, the current approach on our third-party billing between the town and the fire department is not going to work. We're going to run out of money, so we better start thinking now about how we're going to anticipate that because costs are not going to come down.
Anyone have any other questions for the chief?
No, I was just curious about future vehicle needs, but I think Scott can answer that question, so.
As the administrator said, we've had some discussions about this, so the next engine that needs to be replaced is in 2030. And again, with today's pricing, to replace that engine, which is the most recent one we got, identically to what we have sitting at Station 2 right now, we spent, I believe it was $595, somewhere around there, if we ordered that today, it's over a million dollars. If we ordered that today, it's over a million dollars. So, it's, uh, it's pretty staggering, as the administrator said. Even the rescues, I mean, we've gone from two-hundred thousand and now we're, we're pushing five-hundred thousand.
And just to piggyback on that, Town Administrator, is the hope that we'll have that asset management assessment completed prior to our budget conversations in June?
Does come here?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I would hope that it be.
Fully vetted with a adoption strategy in place by the time the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, keep in mind, even with this vehicle, you know, even if it, we got lucky and it was two years, we're still generating more, more money toward it. And then hopefully with, if we continue with staffing increases, now that generates a little bit more, more revenue as well, so that may factor into our discussions about how we're going to approach all of, all of this.
Have the vehicles been needing more repairs now that they're getting to that seven-year stage?
They, they have. Like, uh, what's going to happen is the rotation would go, this replacement would now go into spare and then the spare that we're using right now is getting traded. They've given us ten thousand dollars as a trade.
That's the ten thousand.
Yes.
But is it, is it going to be able to perform?
Oh, yeah.
For the next two years?
Yes, yep. It'll, you know, it'll make a good spare. The mileage is up and that's all, it'll be a perfect spare vehicle for us should something break down.
Anyone have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I just want to be clear, you know, I know that you're going to vote on the number, but that's, hopefully it goes down. These are just contingency, you know, I don't see that happening.
We'll make sure we make that notation.
Right.
[laughter] Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to approve replacement of the North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Lifeline Rescue in the amount of four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars with the understanding that that cost may change.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote or other action on Department of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement for Tree Removal?
In front of you, you should have a master price agreement for tree shrub trimming and removal. This is off the State of Rhode Island Department of Administration. We've reviewed this agreement and recommend the three vendors that are on the current state MPA list. Those vendors are Stanley Tree Service of Smithfield, Rhode Island, Northeastern Tree Service of Pontiac, Gavon, Cranston, and Warwick Tree Service from Coventry, Rhode Island. We do not, and hopefully don't exceed any budgeted amount of money in the operational budget, which this year was forty thousand dollars. The contract period is from December 31st, 24th through December 30th of 2027.
So, what is the purpose of having three vendors? Just availability?
Availability, exactly.
Is anyone?
And whoever we quote gives us a good price, availability, and sometimes their prices are.
They give you unit prices.
We get all the unit pricing and some do kind of vary a little bit.
Never higher, right?
Some, some cases are higher. We've been usually using one, Stanley Tree. We've always had a good relationship with them, going back to when I had no money and they still did the work for free. So, their prices are usually very, very affordable to the town. But I would say that the flexibility of adding the other two that are already on the state MPA kind of dismisses anything that we're kind of steering everything to one vendor.
Have we worked with Northeastern and Warwick Tree in the past?
I have not.
Or is it primarily been Stanley?
It's primarily been Stanley.
Uh-huh.
We're kind of changing it up this year.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to add Stanley Tree, Northeastern, and Warwick Tree Service from the Rhode Island, Department of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement for Tree Removal Services.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Or do you have something else? You have the budget transfer, right?
Yes.
So, once again, in front of you, there should be a budget transfer.
Wait a minute, I got a.
Oops, sorry about that.
Discussion by council vote or other action on Department of Public Works Budget Transfer.
So, you should have in front of you a budget transfer to move thirty-two, thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-three and eighty-three cents from the streetlight project to the snow and ice removal in reserves.
And that just addresses your question earlier. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, in the future, it'd be helpful to have it shown like a balance sheet, you know, the credit and the debit, one account credit, one account debit.
Oh, you want the, you want the credit, okay.
No, just to, you know, show what the balance is going to be in the streetlight in one page.
And then what the balance would be with the transfer, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That would be helpful, yeah.
So, we don't have to do any arithmetic.
Ray, is there that deficit of thirty-two thousand because we underestimated snow and ice removal for this season?
So much that we didn't underestimate, but for the past three seasons, we haven't really had that bad of a winter this year. We used more salt, a little tougher winter with the ice. So, for the last three years, kind of the budget didn't go up, it kind of stayed or went down. We even used up the, I think there was fifteen thousand in reserves that we used that up, so. So, we're standing at the thirty-two thousand deficit. The, the positive that I have is our last delivery of salt, I have probably a half a shed of salt, so I'm going to be a half a percent ahead of the game going into the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Unless we get some ice tonight, but.
Didn't you also mention that the brine truck was down?
And he also, yeah, our brine truck's been down for two seasons, so because of the high cost of all the truck repairs we've had for all the other trucks to go out there and sand and plow, that truck kind of took a backseat. That truck is going to be bet, put back in, in operation and that kind of helps us with our pre-treating instead of granular, using the brine.
Okay.
Which we've always used.
Thanks, Ray.
Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Oh, sure. I will make a motion to approve the transfer, the Department of Public Works Budget Transfer from the lighting project, streetlight project to the snow and ice removal budget.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote or other action regarding selecting and retaining services of an owner's project manager for NOSPA field police station renovation improvement project.
May I ask a clarifying question before we get started? Is it thought that we could also leverage this OPM for the Halliwell project as well?
We would have had to put that in the RFP.
Okay, so we haven't, so they won't be leveraged. This is primarily for the police station. Okay.
Hi, thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Nice to see some new faces as well, too. So, I'm Eric Army, Principal of Signal Works.
And I'm Brian Buckley, Senior Project Architect.
All right, while we're getting this, oh, man, we are snappy tonight. All right, you can go to the first slide. So, the purpose of this update, we've got a sort of a brief overview of the process to date, so this is not a detailed design update on the public safety complex. We're, we're saving that for a subcommittee meeting first, where we get to make sure the chief is involved closely on sort of what we want, where we want to move forward on that. I can discuss that in briefly to kind of give the, the council an update. What we want to start with, though, is the OPM. So, we're going to give an overview of the process, where we had a public RFP, where we received six bids. We had a qualification review, where five of those passed through, and then we had a scoring matrix of those five that passed the qualifications, three rose to the top that had similar pricing and similar qualifications as well, too. So, we're going to give a little summary, Brian will give the summary actually, of the interviewed candidates, RGB Architects, ECC Corporation, and KCM Group. Then we're going to go over a recommendation framework so that we can get an approval for one of those to move forward, so we can maintain this project schedule and move on to construction documents. Any questions about what I'm about to tell you? Excellent. You can stop.
Eric, I actually have one clarifying question.
I see, I knew there was a question.
Can you start, can you just go back to that first slide?
Yeah.
See, I thank you. So, the, the companies or the OPMs, rather, that submitted bids that did not pass, could you speak a little bit about what disqualified them? Was it primarily price and qualif, can you get into a little bit more granular?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. Let me give you sort of a general overview and we can kind of jump into any detail that we need to.
Okay, we'll talk about that later.
Oh, no, I can talk about it right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, that, we went from five down to six. So, there was one entity, they just did not have the public experience that was, actually, not even comparing them to the other bidders, but just compared to sort of what we asked for in the bid, they just didn't have it. We can talk more about that if we need to, but that was, that's the, that's the main disqualification there. Then of those top three that passed, two had pricing that was roughly, what, fifty percent higher than the other three? And these other three that we interviewed, they were very closely grouped with pricing. Some of them that were priced higher, they were very well-qualified. We'd actually worked with one, if not both of those. Yeah, we'd worked with both, actually, we'd worked with all five of these qualified bidders in the past. And two that were much more expensive were very well-qualified, but the three that rose to the interview, we had experience with them, their RFPs were well-developed to what we had asked for and the pricing was very close together.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. Excellent. Just make sure that I'm catching up with everybody. Okay, so for the interview process, this was sort of mid-March that the interviews were, were held. These are the three firms that we interviewed. Now, you see the prior score and the fee proposal. So, the prior score was the score that they had received off of the written proposal that they had given to us. So, you can see between, you know, seventy and eighty points, we can get into a lot of depth on that if we need to. But that was based on, half of the points were for qualifications, what was your background, what was your approach to the project. The other half of the points were for price. So, when you see the fee proposals that are up there, price is already included in that sort of prior score that you're seeing. That's a good way that we found, we've been on both sides of the table as the reviewer, as well as the one being reviewed, that makes sure that the town is not selecting someone that is a low bid that isn't qualified, but also gives the opportunity for a very qualified bid, that's very close pricewise, to be an, an option for the town to move forward with. So, with this, this is just the preliminary scoring. Again, this is before any conversation with any of the bidders. So, one of the key things that we were looking for, for the evaluation criteria while we were talking to them, was looking at their cost proposal, vetting that out, right, because we just saw that on paper, looking through and discussing their relative experience, how they plan on communicating during the process as well as, during the moment, as well as their construction phasing management, and then knowledge of the, the program, such as the police department. I will note on the fee proposal, the two that are asterisked, ECC and KCM, either in the proposal or in the interview, they're very open with a not-to-exceed pricing, where the other bidder was sort of basically a fixed fee. So, as we've experienced with not-to-exceed pricing, that is generally a great way to give the client, the town in this case, a lot of value. And then during the process, you can identify, do we need more scope? And you get as much scope as we've, as the proposal was written for, which would be the max you would need. But if less scope is needed, then that is also a way for the town to derive some value there. Questions on the process of interviewing and going through that? Okay. We've got the next one. Okay, so Brian was able to sit in on every single interview, so I'm going to let him go through the three candidates that we interviewed.
As the screen shows, so RGB Architects, they scored the highest, both qualitatively and quantitatively, from their fee. They are the only of the three that have direct police department construction and design experience, although I will say that the showcased present, uh, projects that they presented were all ten million and above new construction. They did not specify specifically if any of those pieces of experience were on the OPM. We were, I was led to believe that it was as a prime architect or architect of record. They had strong phasing and cost-saving strategies, as did the other two. They have familiarity with the local context. They've actually been the architect of record for North Smithfield before. A few concerns, they missed the FFNE portion in their presentation, but they did include it, include it in their schedule, they just didn't speak to it. And they didn't put a huge emphasis on community engagement. We know that that's very important here, and I'll get into more of that when we talk about the other two candidates as well. So, that's RGB. The second one is ECC Corporation. Their OPM services are relatively new. A lot of the OPMs from Jacobs, which is a bigger outfit, have left Jacobs to start the OPM arm at ECC Corp. They scored second qualitative and quantitatively. They put a very strong emphasis on community engagement and stakeholder engagement. They come, they were very well-prepared with subject matter experts, so they had an SME for mechanical, they had SME for commissioning and thirty, third-party inspections. They have a lot of experience with public projects and are direct contacts from Jacobs that are now at ECC Corp. We've worked with, and, we've worked with successfully before. They unfortunately do not have any direct police station experience and their construction sequencing on how this project may end up getting phased was less defined. And lastly, KCM Group, which is formerly Keough Construction out of East Providence, they just rebranded about a year or two ago, they ranked third. They have deep expertise in logistics and construction phasing. They're a construction manager first, so they will lead that effort in the phasing. They've made an emphasis on cost efficiency, efficiency and tariff awareness, which I thought was very impressive. They don't have any direct police station experience either, but they do have familiarity with high-security projects, electric boat, federal projects and things of that nature. They had less, less of an emphasis on community engagement, and I think that'd be an important conversation to have with them about who they're staffing the project with. So, with that, those are the three summaries of the interviews. I'll turn it back over to Eric.
Can I just, oh, no, you go.
Come on, Brian, you're not up yet.
When you're, when you're saying community engagement, what, what is, to you, what, what are you looking for, for that?
That's a great question. So, that would be really being the town's representative here at the town council, engaging with the community here for public comment. They also, ECC Corp. said they'd have a website, not Facebook, but they'd have a website where the community could log in and see the progress, see progress photos and just be really engaged every step of the way, and that was an impressive factor for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's funny, as Brian and I were going through this, you know, we, we met with the subcommittee, so we've talked with a number of members of the town council as well, and you know, we were asked for a recommendation sort of based on everything that we'd seen, and we felt like the best way to really present this was they, each of the three had different strengths, and it's really up to the town council about sort of what we value the most on this, with town council slash URM Building Committee as well, too. Congratulations. And so, phasing and logistics, you know, we've talked about this project, it's multi-phase. We're, right now, when the next subcommittee meetings, we'll be getting into the design development estimates, you know, we've talked quite a bit with the prior councils of about what the budget is, what the budget could be, and so, there've been conversations with council, with the subcommittee and with chief as well, too, about, you know, how do we need to phase this? How do we need to make sure this project happens, even if we're doing certain things now, so we can front-load that, so that other things can happen in the, in the future? An OPM could be a great way to really bridge that. As we know, these projects are longer, sometimes the administration has changed over the project, so if we have a solid OPM, that could be a way of almost future-proofing if we do do this in phases. So, that's probably the strongest argument for phasing logistics-based OPM, which KCM was obviously head and shoulders above the rest. Counterpoint to that, for ECC, Brian was just sharing about the transparency and community trust. We know that this project has had life over the last ten years or so in a number of different ways. If that's a concern to the council and you feel like that's sort of one of the strongest things that we really need another member of the team to plan, because, hey, we're going to hire a general contractor, if they don't know about construction, we picked the wrong team, right? So, if the value is saying, hey, we really want to bring someone in that's going to create a platform for the community to see where we are in this project, where we've been, where we're going, as well as sort of being very strong on communication, sort of at the council and building committee level, then ECC is by far the prime there. And then, I guess, the last piece, RGB, you know, their pricing was decent, their experience was strong, they have experience on the architecture side, as well as the OPM side, probably the most direct police experience of the members that we interviewed. I know the municipality here has had mixed experience with them in the past, and so that is a known quantity, but it can also potentially be a concern there as well, too. So, those are sort of the three options, the three drivers for that. We can see some strong arguments for phasing logistics, or the transparency, and sort of community trust, sort of based on our experience and our conversations. Those seem to be the tools that we didn't have in the tool belt, between, you know, the construction manager that's going to be coming on the project lifecycle, and then knowing that the next thing we're going to be doing is jumping into cost estimates that are dealing quite a bit with tariffs. We've already had some, a number of conversations about where pricing could go, and how, can we've started these conversations before, like, can we do this portion now so that we could follow up with another portion of the project, if for whatever reason the pricing didn't come in a way that we could do that now? So, that's definitely a place that we've been most involved with, but as building committee and council, you probably have the best perspective on the needs for this project in the town right now.
So, with KCM, did they agree to report out to the council, or did they agree to have a certain amount of meetings, or FaceTime, I guess?
Yeah, so part of the base scope for the OPM RFP was a number of scheduled town council meetings, and then they carried a few actually ad-hocks. So, six months from now, if the town council need them to come, it's already part of the base scope. So, all three of them did carry those meetings and that support.
Okay.
And I think, Kim, it seems like the contrast, you're like, hey, what is ECC giving that the others aren't?
Yeah.
And it's kind of that over and above communication, largely facing the general public in addition to their responsibilities to the council.
And I know I wasn't on all the calls, but I believe this was the one that had the experience with separating, is that right, Chief? Like, kind of doing one, like you said, phasing into different areas?
That was KCM.
That was KCM?
Yep.
Yeah, right, okay.
That's right.
All right.
In reading through our packet for this evening, I noticed that KCM, as well as ECC, provided presentations. I did not see one from RGB, not sure if they didn't submit one, or we just haven't received yet. KCM did provide a project approach, which I think we just alluded to, and I really did appreciate how they already have started a plan. And I think since we really do want to ensure that we're moving on this quickly, I feel as though if they've already done their due diligence and crafting a plan, then they could probably start, you know, a little bit quicker. Did ECC or RGB also provide similar plans, or is that just specific to KCM?
ECC Corp did make mention of phasing, and stress that, you know, they understood that this project is likely to be phased. They did not give concrete examples in their presentation.
Okay.
To that effect, but they did discuss it. So, there was a discussion point, it just wasn't displayed in their presentation. RGB, I'm sorry that you didn't get it, I'm happy to send that over, just for the record. I can't recall off the top of my head if they presented that in their project approach, or if it was discussion point. All three parties knew that this is likely a multi-year phased project. KCM demonstrated how.
Okay, yeah. That was excellent, thank you.
Is ECC also a rural-based company?
They are in Massachusetts, but the team that would be staffed are all local, so I think the closest one is Cumberland.
Okay.
They did indicate they were opening an office in Cumberland, too.
Resourcing. ECC, it looks like we will just have one designated OPM, is that the case, or is it a team of people that will be supporting?
Yeah, it's a team of people. You'll have one, or we'll have one point of contact, and then he or she would filter the information to, like, the subject matter experts and things of that nature.
And that would be the similar resourcing structure for KCM and RGB as well? One designated OPM with the...
Yes, yeah, I'd say that's fair.
Can I just ask one more question?
Questions you want.
So, KCM, I know they kept talking about how they did excel in the phasing pieces of construction, obviously, we know that's what we're going to be doing. So, how did ECC talk about that? How did they feel about doing that type of project?
Yeah, they came well-prepared to the presentation to discuss phasing, it didn't, they elected to focus on past projects and their experience, they felt that coming into this with no police, direct police station experience, that they were kind of behind the ball. They didn't know what everyone else was presenting, obviously, either. So, they spent a lot of their time focusing on how, as a team, they would bring this project to a successful completion. That did include phasing, it did include things like value engineering to reduce pricing, schedule efficiency, and managing the soon-to-be construction manager when we release for
So, I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. So, I sat in on all three interviews. ECC, KCM, and RGB. After the three interviews, I was between ECC and KCM as, you know, who I would select. The report came back from Signal Works, they basically came to the same conclusion. I think that with ECC and KCM, yes, neither of them have direct police experience, but they're project managers. And the management of a project is the management of a project. I think that, I got the impression the chief was impressed with a lot of the conversation about the phasing, but if I'm in the shoes of any of those three people, and I'm trying to sell my business to an entity, I'm not necessarily going to delve into, you know, the weeds as much as they did. I really liked the fact that ECC came with their subject matter experts, that is a value-added, you know, bonus, in my opinion, that, you know, can't be touched. So, I think, you know, if we're looking to make a recommendation, I'm going to, you know, make the recommendation that we go with ECC.
But now, they brought subject matter individuals, but there would still only be one project manager, right?
So, the way that, they also, they had, what, six people on that call, I think? So, they had the project manager, they had a, you know, like, the head of the company, or somebody, like a director of the company. They had a mechanical engineer consultant, they had clerk of the works, and I think there was one other person. One of my questions was about staffing, and they indicated that they would staff the project more than any of the other companies did, because their project manager indicated that he lives in, like, Milford maybe, or not too far from here. So, you know, he would be checking at the project, the clerk of the works, they seemed to, you know, say they would be there almost on a daily basis. So, you, I got the impression we would have more involvement from ECC. KCM, when I asked the question, they said that they wouldn't be there on a day-to-day basis, which isn't necessary, but, you know, knowing that your project manager, you know, if he's going to another job, he stops in for 20 minutes, I don't think that's a bad
No, I was just going to say, that's really helpful insight, because I obviously couldn't infer that from the packet, so it was helpful to hear that, David, because in looking at, you know, especially the information that we received, my initial inclination would be to prioritize the group that had the phasing and the logistics outline, just because I know what a priority project this is. So, that was helpful insight.
And either company is ready to go, like, there's, we're not waiting for any other projects to finish for anyone, they're all, they're just ready?
No, I've gotten multiple phone calls about when this meeting is happening.
From all companies up here?
Yeah, well, no, actually, not from RGB, just from KCM and ECC.
Okay, good, good to hear that, so at least they're waiting.
And you can't make a bad choice between the two of them. What David's bringing up about the value add, it's like, that's a very insightful approach, right? I think, you know, KCM doesn't keep those folks on staff, right? And project managers are project management, so you've got to have a certain amount of time on task there. So, ECC, knowing kind of where they are business-wise, they are definitely, while their pricing was very similar, I think their level of service is a bit more aggressive in that regard.
Madam President, too, I just want to chime in, because I also participated in the interviews, and I would echo Councilman Punchak's position, that I think ECC did a really good job in making a presentation, I felt very comfortable with him.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I will.
All right.
I will make a motion. So, how is this, I guess, one question, what would the former contract be? Is this going to be like an AIA contract, or do we need to get into that, or is it just a matter of have Signal Works move forward with awarding a contract, or negotiating, or finalizing a contract with ECC Corporation?
I think at this point, it would be the town to ECC would go direct.
You're going to help facilitate it, though? Like...
We can make the connection between what was in the RFP and the scope and those sort of things.
Will there be an AIA contract?
I think there would be an AIA contract, and I would, again, make sure that we put the burden on the vendor to provide that AIA contract.
Them to provide the contract?
They, I run into the, in the past, they provide it, we review it, and then we execute it. It's, you know, the contracts are pretty standard, but there are those unique nuances, but they have, we can always purchase our own AIA software, but it always makes more sense to have them deliver it.
Yeah, if I could also chime in on that, too. AIA makes sense, but I don't like when you accept AIA contracts as boilerplate, and you sign them. I think Signal Works could provide us some very value-added insight on some of the nuances of that, and where we need to really focus on maybe making some modifications to protect ourselves.
David, for the language, I might say, you may ask them to provide an industry-standard contract suitable to the, for review and suitable to the town.
Okay. We didn't ask them for draft contracts?
David, before you make a motion, can I just ask one more question? Chief Lafferty, would you like to make any, you know, recommendations or provide any of your insights in engaging with these three companies?
I'm not going to say much different than everyone in the room, like Mr. Punchak had brought up. ECC and KCM were very similar. I know the ECC component, they had a lot of professionals on the presentation, it was very impressive. And the public relations part of it is very important for this town. I was impressed with KCM on the flow of work. You know, this is a very comprehensive plan, and the workflow is very important. Just the way it's Mr. Seekum laid out his plan of action with the presentation that he had was pretty impressive. He seemed like maybe some form of military in his experience. So, that's the only difference I saw, I think you couldn't go wrong with either one. But I do know that the public relations section of that company, ECC, is very important.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Back to you.
Oh, boy, back to Eric.
Well, and I think it's worth adding, don't forget, you're not losing Signal Works either, right? So, we're going to continue to be the guide and represent the town and chief and the police department the best that we can. So, where ECC, let's say they don't have the best phasing plan, we're here to help navigate that.
And you'll have your construction manager that will go through the same qualifications and bid process. Yeah, where we really see the value here is, especially as we start going from design development, getting the final approach, construction document-wise, getting that bid, there's just sort of a pace that we need someone that's dedicated, that has the time and the ability to sort of focus on that, to move that stuff forward.
Okay, I will make a motion to have Signal Works facilitate the drafting of industry-standard contracts that is suitable to the town between ECC Corporation and the town of North Smithfield, to be reviewed by administration. Does the planner want to look at this, probably? I guess he's administration. Who else wants to look at this besides the administration, the solicitor?
You guys are pointing at each other.
To be reviewed by the administration and the solicitor.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, I don't have the amount in front of me, it was $207,792.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. And then we just have one more thing under this item, is a discussion by council voter other action on approval of payment to Signal Works for renovations to the North Smithfield Police Station, invoice number 2415-108, in the amount of $33,141.25. Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the payment to Signal Works for renovations to North Smithfield Police Station in the amount of $33,141.25.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Christopher Faro?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Thank you so much for coming tonight. So, now, what's our next, when do we hear from you again?
Yeah, so the next steps is to meet with a subcommittee, which would include the chief, town planner, administration interested, and at least one or two members of the council. We have design development estimates back.
Okay.
We have an internal strategy that I think is going to really help the chief accomplish what he's looking for, as well as the town to do what they need to do with the building, with the long-term plan. So, what we would like to do is the recommended OPM bidder is involve them in that, even if we're still in the initial finalizing the contract. I think it's essential, before we really move forward full bore with construction documents, that they're at least briefed and can offer their perspective on that. Because there are a couple of different pathways to choose, and I think having them on board with how the subcommittee, the town, and the chief recommend will be essential.
So, are we talking like a couple of weeks, or next month, or...
I would love to have that subcommittee meeting this week.
Okay.
So, we'll be, now that we have a direct contact, we'll be circling something to our ECC contact, as well as the members of the subcommittee.
Okay, perfect.
And then, the next, I would like to visit you guys again in two weeks, and at least have a direction there, or we could also do an ad hoc town council slash building committee-only meeting, because oftentimes, there's a bit more depth on these things, and a number of things to weigh. And I know you guys have had some very busy Monday evening agendas recently.
Yeah, just let us know if we need to do a special meeting, that's fine.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you so much.
One more question. Are you going to send something to the two other bidders, you know, like a thank you for participating in our solicitation?
We can take the lead on that, yeah. And also, any, actually, all the applicants, we would want to send something along those lines.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Discussion by council voter other action on Hallwell Multi-Generational Building Committee. Number one, recommendation on revision to resolution to include co-chairs and monthly update on progress of committee review of recommended site plan and floor plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let CJ pull that up. And you can probably just skip the first line. So, I'm here this evening representing the Hallwell Multi-Generational Building Committee. Currently, as some of you have attended the initial organizational meeting back at the end of February, we had nominated two co-chairs, myself and Mrs. Tebow, in efforts to bring our two groups together, the Hallwell Review Committee and the Multi-Generational Advisory Committee. And we felt that that would be the best way to move the committee forward, having both perspectives of both committees represented. And, quite frankly, since we've started, Mrs. Tebow and I, we meet at Dunkin' Donuts, we go over the agenda, we go over any topics that need to be discussed at the, at meetings, and kind of align ourselves to prepare for our committee meetings. So, that's where we, was back on our February 27th meeting, that was our formal recommendation to the council to revise the resolution. I think the initial resolution that was, there was a draft resolution that had chair, vice chair, or co-chairs. So, we were just, made a motion to request that the council look at that. So, that would need either a motion this evening, or direction to the solicitor to revise the resolution, however you see fit. Since then, we have been having our bi-weekly meetings with BH+A. We've kicked off the project with them two weeks after our organizational meeting. We've reviewed and refined the site plans and the floor plans based on what was approved previously at the master plan. We've reviewed and refined the site plans and the floor plans based on what was approved previously at the master plan. And then, we've also been reviewing the Rhode Island DEM permitting process, which is gonna be starting pretty quickly, actually. So, a little on that, the DEM process has been estimated to be about ninety to a hundred days for permitting. So, BH Plus A is working with their civil engineer par corporation, and they are working to schedule a preliminary meeting with DEM. And that basically starts to set up the guardrails of where we can work within the project wetlands boundaries. And I can show you a little bit more of that as we go forward. However, right now, the, basically, the impervious surface is not changing with some of the options that the committee has reviewed. So, basically, the stormwater management systems tend to stay relatively the same in the multiple options. But we do have a preferred option. And then, at our last meeting, we also discussed potential understanding that there's budget shortfalls right now. We are looking at potential sponsorships and donor categories. I think we landed potentially on utilizing a method that we had seen previously from a past project, where we would utilize historic person, people from town as different donor categories or tiers, if you will, as well as creating some system for corporate sponsorships as well, or corporate donors. And then, I already did the recommendation to revise the resolution. So, if you wanna go to the next slide, CJ? So, just as a refresh, this was the approved Phase One master plan, site plan. I'm gonna back up a little bit, so hopefully my- We're looking at the multi-generational center here, as well as the community gardens adjacent to it. We have parking spaces within there, and then we have courts to the north of that. Since this master plan was done, DEM has revised their wetland setbacks and their buffers, so we've had to pivot a little bit. And then, we've gone to, if you wanna go to the next slide. We've ended on this as our preferred site plan as it stands right now. The committee did have a bit of a discussion the other night on this plan. Right now, this plan shows the building and the new parking all outside of the wetland setbacks. So, that means very minimal permitting through DEM. We have a little bit of an easier course. But there's also the, the other things that we're looking at are we're improving the site conditions that are within the wetlands right now. So, if you recall, there's the big parking lot that's adjacent to the basketball courts. We're getting rid of all of that. We're taking a lot of impervious surfaces and turning that into pervious. So, that's always a point for us in regards of the eyes of the DEM. The other items that you'll notice is that we have relocated the community garden to be north of the parking lot. We were thinking that this could be easy, easier access. We, I know Mrs. Lilly had presented deliveries of manure, dirt, the like of all that. So, putting it in that location. And then, you'll see, you'll also see the footprint of, you know, Phases Two and Three that we have been keeping in mind. So, if you wanna go to the next slide, CJ, this is just an enlarged version. So, what was discussed on Thursday night is potentially taking this entire footprint and starting to encroach a little bit on this orange line, which is the wetlands buffer, the wetlands-
Jurisdiction. Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction. So, like I said, we were trying to keep as much out of it as possible, but now, because we know we're making things, the situation better, you can see the dash line of the traffic circle for the bus drop-off, the dash lines of all the parking. So, we're gonna kind of push, push our boundaries, to say the least, to see kind of where DEM will accept, where we can place that. Because we also are dealing with an existing tree line, which is right along here, that cuts through the majority of this building. So, you know, DEM also likes trees, we like trees. So, we wanna try to, you know, minimize the impact on the site as best we can, all within the parameters of what we are dealt with on this forty-acre site. Any questions on site? Okay, I'm gonna keep going then. So, again, just a refresher, this is the master plan that was previously approved by the council. The layout really hasn't adjusted too much, but CJ, if you wanna go to the next slide. One of the things that we are starting to look at is, you know, the need for add alternates. So, understanding, as Signal Works had talked about budget tariffs, all these lovely unknowns that are now getting thrown at us. So, we're already in the mindset of, okay, what areas could we start to take out of the project if necessary? And then, we can start to move forward in one way or the other. So, again, you know- For presentation purposes, you come in from the vestibule here, the parking would be up to your north, come into the cafe lounge lobby area, which is about, I can't read that, five hundred square feet, give or take. We also have our commercial kitchen, we have our restrooms, we've added a family restroom with a shower. One of the things that we've been talking about with the administration is the need for a, you know, warming station or a place for emergency management. And there are federal funds available if we add a shower, because we already have a backup generator built into this project. So, that gives us the ability to have an emergency shelter in place that the community can use if ever we need to. The multipurpose room can be divided up into two spaces. They have six, you can see the number of seats for both areas there. And we also have a patio that opens up, that looks out onto the field area. And then, we also have a flex program room that could be used in any number of ways. We also have added in a sink if there's ever a need for arts to get cleaned up for. And then, one of the other things that we discussed at length about was the number of offices. One of the things that we, Mrs. Tebow, had brought up is that there are services that get brought in for the seniors, such as, you know, AARP advisors, retirement advisors, healthcare folks that can come in for nurses, nursing and whatnot. And, you know, end-of-life discussions as well. So, any lawyer or legal advice that they could go into this office right here. Nope, the ones, so, here, right next to the reception. So, you're able to, that office serves a multiple number of purposes that can give people the ability to utilize that. As well as the flex office and director space, you know, once that gets factored in. One of the nice things about the commercial kitchen, too, is that that also plays into the emergency use of the building as well. Right now, this is kind of our preferred plan of where we've been going. Just as an update for, there's still some refinements going on here as we progress. They just presented some elevational studies at our last meeting as well. So, we've given, we have given them further feedback on, you know, aesthetics and looks. And that's gonna kind of start to take shape over the next, you know, a couple of weeks or so. Moving forward, there are some milestones that we would be looking to kind of keep the project on, on time here. So, effectively, I wanted to ask the question, and you can either answer now or later. But one of the things that we are gonna be needing to do is making sure that we get the appropriate approvals at the appropriate time. So, that means approving the site plan so that BH Plus A and PAR can go to RIDEM. So, we're gonna need a formal approval from council on that. We're also gonna need final approval on the schematic design so that they can go into, BH Plus A can move into design development. Design development is where we will get a cost estimate of the project, so that will give us a good gut check at the end of that process. And then, we go into construction documents. So, I wanted to put the bug in the council's ears that, you know, we can either have a joint meeting with the Hallwell Multi-Generational Building Committee, or we can present things to the council as I am doing tonight. So, that was one of the things that I wanted to pose that question. And in figuring that out, if we're gonna have special meetings with you and joint, or a joint meeting, so then I can start to work with Joanne and the administration to make sure that we have those on the calendar. Because I would hate to miss one of these dates, and then the project starts to fall behind. So, that, I'm working with BH Plus A to get a final schedule on all the items that we wanna make sure that we're having appropriate time for approvals. But I would say on the, either on the May nineteenth council meeting, or thereabout, we would have our final schematic design for review and approval of the next phase, and also the final site plan for DEM submission for permitting, which, again, will be about ninety to a hundred days. At the end of July to mid-August, we would be having the final design development documents wrapped up, and the updated cost estimate for review and approval of the council. And then, again, approval to move into the construction documents phase. And then, from mid-October to beginning of November, somewhere in that area, would be the final construction documents or the bid documents, and final updated cost estimate for review and approval as well. So, I know I just throw a lot of information at you guys, you can certainly let me know. But I would like to finalize dates if they're gonna be joint meetings, or if Mrs. Tebow and I will be providing updates at a council meeting. I figured it might be worthwhile to have the joint meetings, because we'll have the architect present. They'll be able to answer questions for you rather than me speaking on their behalf. And then, that way, you get feedback in real time from them rather than waiting to go back and forth.
I mean, I would think we're probably gonna have to have special meetings, because we're, we go back into our public meeting in May, and then we stop going into the budget season, so, or budget adoption, I should say. So, you said, May nineteenth?
Yeah, yeah, that would be for the timeframe of when they'd have the final schematic and final site plans done.
Jeff, is that final site plan or conceptual? Because final implies full site drainage engineering and all that.
Right, that's the anticipation, is that we-
Wow, that's aggressive.
Yeah. That we would have, we've given them direction based off of our last meeting with the site plan currently. So, they're gonna start their preliminary discussions. I believe Mark is gonna be involved in that one way or another, just based, because I've seen emails being going back and forth between them. So, I believe that's the intent, that they would have, and their draft schedule that they sent me, they have submit RIDEM wetland permit at the end of May, so.
And I know you wanna talk about when you could possibly schedule a public meeting. The only other couple of comments that I would have, Jeff, I, this is sort of a last-minute thing. I had a meeting today with Bob Mayo at Sladeville Congregational Church regarding the food pantry. They really wanna move that pantry out of the church. So, all I am suggesting is maybe you try to get a handle, I mean, I took some pictures, I could send them to you.
Right.
It looks like we're talking probably around somewhere on five hundred square feet-
Right.
-of area.
Yep.
If there's any way we can fit this in, because I think it also offers the potential for other funding-
Yep.
-streams. And the only other thing that I wanted to be very transparent on here, and we've talked, Jeff and I and Mark have talked about this, and we're working on it. And that is, we are going to fire the marshal right now, because the only concern that we have is if the fire marshal is going to require a second point of egress and ingress to the site. I'm hoping the heck not, because that is problematic. But we just wanna make real sure about that. I don't have any really concern about that. We don't want to get too far down the path, and all of a sudden, fire marshal says, "Fire code requires another point of ingress and egress." And when you look at that from this site, there's no place to do it. I mean, you've got major topographical issues and wetlands. So, we're, we're, we'll get a flush, they'll flush that out really, really quick.
Yeah.
So, the nineteenth would actually be our council meeting, so maybe, you said you guys meet on Thursdays?
We meet on the first and third Thursdays of every month. So-
So, May twenty-second, you'd be meeting?
We'd be happy to have you, if you, yes, essentially, moral, unless there's a reason for us not to meet, then yes, we would be meeting on May twenty-second.
Is that okay with everyone else on the council? Administration, good or not? Okay, so why don't we schedule a joint meeting on May twenty-second, Thursday? Do you guys meet at six forty, what time do you guys?
We'd now start at six.
Can we do six forty-five?
I can ask.
Okay.
I don't wanna speak for the group.
Okay, so, May twenty-second at six forty-five?
So, that's it for me. I think the only thing that we'd be looking for as far as council action is just the revised resolution. And if that wants to be tabled to another night, so be it.
So, just, I'll make a motion to have the solicitor modify the resolution to account for co-chairs.
Thank you. That's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff. Discussion by council voter, other action on town boards and commissions. One, resignation from Hallwell Multi-Generational Building Committee. Second alternate, two-year term expiring eleven-thirty, two thousand twenty-six. So, we have a letter in our packet. Mr. Tagleone has resigned from the committee. So, can we just send him a thank you, like always? And going forward for committees, boards, and committees, any open positions? If it's an alternate, can we just kind of specify that alternates still need to attend all meetings? Because that's probably a gray area that everyone's not really aware of. Okay, thank you. Resignation from Board of Assessment Review, three-year term expiring eleven-thirty, two thousand twenty-five. We have a letter. No, we don't, sorry. Yeah. No, we don't. Who's, is someone?
Board of Assessment Review?
You should have a second one. Lisa Gagnon?
Okay, yeah. All right, because it says something else on it, all right.
Yeah.
All right, so, we have a letter stating that Lisa Gagnon is resigning from the-
It's Board of Assessment.
Board of Assessment Review. And we can also send her a thank you? And those positions will be posted?
Yes, they're already been advertised for the past two weeks as well.
Okay, good.
As soon as I receive the resignation, we put them on onboard in the newsletter.
All right, great, thank you. Discussion by council voter, other action on communications from Town Administrator.
Sorry, I'm looking at the calendar for our joint meeting. The first and third Thursdays are actually the first and the fifteenth, not the twenty-second. So, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be meeting on the twenty-second.
Can you do a special meeting on the twenty-second?
I would have to confer with the planning department, because I know the planning department holds the second and the fourth Thursdays for their meetings. So, alternatively, we could look at the twenty-ninth, because we have a fifth Thursday that month, but-
Maybe the twenty-first, Wednesday, the twenty-first?
I'd have to check back with the committee.
Yeah. Joanne, do you mind just sending a email out to see availability for May twenty-first? It's a Wednesday night. Is everyone on the council okay with that?
Can we not? Do the joint meeting on the fifteenth?
They won't have the stuff ready by the night.
No, I could, I could make sure that BH Plus A have. Because, I mean, the, the meeting on the fifteenth, we were, I was anticipating that we would have that information ready to present to the council in the event that we had to present for the nineteenth. So, I'll make sure that BH Plus A is ready on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, the fifteenth?
If the fifteenth works, then that's what, that's what I'll put in. Sorry, I just saw that when I was looking at my calendar.
Thank you. Discussion by council voter, other action on communications from Town Administration, asset management, and grants.
Just a reminder that the Asset Management Committee is supposed to be in the council. In terms of grants, I put in your package, I'm not sure if I put in the package. An updated summary, um, just wanna provide some background on this. I've talked into this before, we have two point three seven five million dollars outstanding grants, uh, for the same stall, uh, straight water. With five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars attached. We're gonna have to make some decisions about this later. Because, right now, Bill Despito is getting engineering services, it's a cost estimate because it's really, the total project is around five point one million dollars, based on how we're guessing right now, because we have to replace all the water lines in the area that is currently part of the Blackstone system. There's a lot of moving parts here, so, I'm just giving you an update on that. We will be coming back to, probably in the next thirty days, with more comprehensive strategy, how to manage this. But these grants are still outstanding and it's a project that was a lot more expensive than money we have budgeted. Multi-generational, I'm currently working, um, we're currently working on the two previously awarded common commercial appropriations that are provided. The four million dollars and one million dollars, we're starting to do it, just starting now doing documentation. Relative to those grants, I hope to have that done in about two weeks. We did submit another grant request, commercial appropriation in Senator Reed, for the multi-generation facility, at one point five million dollars. And we also submitted on May 25th, the CDBG grant application to the state of Rhode Island. Also for the multi-generation facility. That money was specifically earmarked for road improvements, in the town that's helping with the site. The, we had a COPS grant that was requested over two thousand twenty-five. The continuing resolution on that from Congress, they wiped out all community grants. So we resubmitted that, um, to Congressman Emo, worth five hundred thousand dollars for the COPS grant. We submitted a grant on May 25th to Scouters Hall, under the state CDBG program, at the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A grant request has been submitted to Congressman Whitehouse, um, for three hundred thousand dollars, what we call Route 146 water solution. Our thought is that we were going to look at alternative routes for water availability in that corridor. But we also submitted a grant under the Road, the Route 146, um, Road, of the R I spec drainage program, which we already currently have the grants on, for the same thing. Three hundred thousand dollars, so we're, we're hedging our bets between one of the other, to see if we can get the money for that. And we submitted a grant on May 27th, uh, to REMA, for the engineering, for the cherry park culvert, which has been a major source of flooding in that area. Uh, our hope is that we can get the engineering done and, uh, then next year go back to REMA for the, a grant to actually do the improvements, which are probably around about close to a million dollars. Oh, the, um, as it relates to cherry culvert engineering, the original engineering work that was done on that was through EA engineering. We looked into the, that issue and we concluded that we can go back to them under the sole source because of the engineering services. If we had to start all over again, all that engineering work, engineering work has to be done. So we can engage Cherry, uh, E and Engineering, E and A Engineering to do, uh, the engineering work for the culvert. We'd always yet go back to the town council on that, but that actually helps us to compress the grant process with REMA. So REMA's really excited that we're able to get this thing going, really important stuff like that. So, a lot of grants are out there. It's a, it's, it's funny time, so, we'll see what happens, but certainly we've got a lot of things going. Also, the, uh, the RFT with the grants. I'm waiting for Kim's assessment and I'm waiting for John Borogard. And the finance director is gonna give them till they have that to win so far. Hopefully we can make a recommendation within the next two weeks on that, for where, how we wanna go forward with that.
Lots of grants since we last met?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Town Administrator, I know that DJ had previously mentioned pursuing a grant, um, for Pachico Park and some of the playground equipment.
Yes.
Um, can we look into a grant of that nature?
Yeah, we actually have in, in the budget at this point, um, a hundred thousand dollars of playground equipment-
Oh.
For Pachico.
Okay.
Um, they asked for a hundred twenty-five. The administration parlayed that back a little bit. So there is some money there at the council, includes there in their budget. But yeah, we need to start, that's a whole different source of money that we need to start chasing.
Okay.
And I, Mark Carullo has talked, actually talked me about that today. And said that there's a couple sources that have got their eyes on, that are supposed to open up in, uh, late summer this year. So, we'll be keeping our eye on it and see if we chase the money.
Yeah, yeah, I think especially that we're pursuing that CDBG grant for, um, Scouters Hall. If we could have more of a comprehensive strategy for that whole park, that could be a really great community asset.
Scouters Hall grant requests are for, one, the building-
Right.
But it's also the access road.
Mm-hmm.
So, right, that's like an anchor.
Mm-hmm.
We should be able to parlay off of that and some other stuff.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, open forum pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash six D, maximum three minutes per person. Did anyone wanna get up and speak in public forum for the end of the meeting?
Very important, you know, you mentioned, and we're going to be administrative. Uh, when you were talking about the cherry park flooding, whatever you do, please don't let them blow up the Bee's Dam in the pond that feeds Cherry Brook, because the year that the bee has built that dam, was the year that all those side streets and rivers stopped flooding. So, let them mess around anything, but don't let them touch that Bee's Dam, it's still there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in open forum? Next is executive session, discussion by council vote on other action regarding Rhode Island General Law, forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One Dudley Development Corp versus Jennifer St. George in her capacity of tax assessor for the town in Usmarkfield. Case number PC two oh two two dash five oh six four pending. Dudley Development Corp versus Jennifer St. George in her capacity as tax assessor for the town in Usmarkfield. Case number PC two oh two five dash one three oh five new. Notice of claim to Usmarkfield Town Council, personal injury claim, and for potential litigation. Anyone make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to recess to executive session.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Ms. Sohara? Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session, indicate that no votes were taken and to seal the minutes.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes. Discussion by council vote or other action regarding round general law 42-46-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One Dudley Development Corporation versus Jennifer St. George in her capacity as tax assessor for the town of North Smithfield, case number PC 2025-1305 new. And discussion by council vote or other action regarding notice of claim to North Smithfield Town Council personal injury claim.
Madam President, we've got to item number one. That's a new, as I indicated to you, that's a new tax case. You've already assigned the previous case to my office at the municipal rate. I would ask that just to be cost effective that you also assign this to my office at the municipal rate.
So I'll make a motion to assign the Dudley Development Corp. versus Jennifer St. George in her capacity as tax assessor for the town of North Smithfield case to, is it the law offices of Igliozzi, David Igliozzi?
That's fine.
That's fine, at the municipal rate.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Alve.
Yes.
I don't believe there's any action needed on item number two.
Right, so we're all set on that one. All right, take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Paul and David say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.